Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well. And call some work session to order. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Bowles, do you have any comment before we begin with the presentation?
No, ma'am. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have one report today, Juvenile Justice Reform Process. So I'll turn it over to the Human Services team.
Excellent. Thanks, Mayor Walker. I'm Hunter Smith, if you have not met. I work with the Human Services Department as the current planner. And I want to start off by thanking everyone for their time today for us to give a short presentation on juvenile probation transformation that we're doing here locally in our area, Charlottesville. I'm going to try to introduce everybody that's on the team. Some are here speaking. I'll start with the ones that are speaking first, and I'll turn it over to Opal West. He'll be leading the presentation. So today, presenters, we have Opal West with the Annie Casey Foundation. We have Martha Carroll, the Director of the Local Court Services Unit, the 16th. We have Krista Galio, who's the probation supervisor. We have Mark Moore, who's the intake supervisor at the Court Services Unit, and myself. I'll be presenting one slide with Human Services. We also have Andrew Wilder, who I can't tell if he's here today, with Commonwealth Attorney's Office. We have Joey Lewis, who's with the Charlottesville Police Department. He's on our team. Jenna Easton with the Department of Juvenile Justice. And finally Judge Beredo, the local JDNR judge, has been working with us since we went to Georgetown in November 2019. Seems like 10 years ago, but it wasn't as long ago as that, but it sure does seem like. So again, we're going to review some of the probation transformation initiatives we have, and if Opal, if you're ready, I'll turn it over to you. And I think, Brian, we're probably ready for the slides if they're loaded up.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. Thank you for having us this afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up? Great. I am at the airport traveling, so just wanted to give you a heads up in case there's some background noise. But we're going to, I'm going to do my best. Thank you very much for having us today. My name is Opal West. I'm with the Casey Foundation, and I am the Technical Assistance Lead for Charlottesville team for their capstone project following the Georgetown Certificate Program for Probation Transformation. If you could advance the slide. So I'm going to give you a very high level of what is probation transformation from Casey's vision and what Casey proposed as probation transformation. You can go for the next slide again. This is our vision for transforming probation, juvenile probation. We formulated our vision based on where we think the field can go for young people and how it can benefit them if they are involved in the system at the probation level. It really hinges on partnerships with families and communities. And our long-term and all of our goals hinge on promoting personal growth for the young person, positive behavior change, and long-term success. It all is really about relationship building and not so much on compliance and surveillance. And while we prioritize public safety, it is a priority for our initiative. We really place a high priority also on serving our young people through relationships and community-based organization building. So there's two pillars to our vision. The first one is diversion. We know that diversion is severely underutilized throughout our country across the board. And we believe that over 60% of young people who come into contact with the system can be better served by diversion. And when we say diversion, we really are thinking about we're promoting community-based-led diversion programs. So those programs that are led for diversion are really housed and led by community-based organizations rather than system players. The second pillar of probation, the vision of probation transformation is probation. We believe that a significant amount of young people do not have to be on probation, as I just spoke about for diversion, and that probation should be isolated to a target population of young people who actually need probation. And that the young people who do need probation are those that pose a significant risk to serious offending or repeat offending or have committed serious offenses. You can go to the next slide. So what does it mean whenever we refashion probation the way that we have envisioned it at the Casey Foundation? It means limiting probation to youth who have committed serious or repeat offenders and pose a risk to public safety. Most young people will age out of problematic behavior or delinquency. We know that through research. And so we follow the research and have let the research guide our beliefs. And if young people are not involved in the system, they are more likely to be successful throughout their lives. So if we isolate probation for those that really need it, that's one of the goals for probation. The second thing would be to assign smaller caseloads to our probation officers so that they can spend that quality time, their expertise, their knowledge, on the young people who actually need probation. So we believe that we can achieve that through a caseload of eight to 12 young people on each caseload. To facilitate family-engaged case planning process, which really seeks to partner with young people and families to create goals for themselves, to create networking and community networks that they need to support them through their probation term and achieve their goals. But this is really to partner, seek to partner with families so that they are heavily engaged in the entire probation term and process. The use of incentives and opportunities to explore youth's interests and develop their skills is another one. We know that incentives are a huge motivator for young people. We know that through the adolescent brain development science that we know now that has been explored for the past 20 years. And we know that incentives is a huge, huge motivator for young people. And we can actually get them to change their behavior by using incentives and rewards. It actually doesn't have to be just incentives and rewards. We also want to seek opportunities for our young people. By opportunities, I mean things that they can explore that will help them develop or even be able to identify their interest in whatever it is that they're seeking. So that could be culinary classes or art classes or some sort of sports or any other learning opportunities that they're seeking. We believe that those are motivators and can be used to redirect young people. And then build partnerships with families and community organizations so that young people stay connected and get connected to the folks that live for the rest of their lives, their support system, their neighborhood. We know that that's what promotes public safety, when young people are connected to their community, committed to folks who care about them, and connected to a support system. So refashioning probation really seeks to build those up so that they can, so that the community and families can wrap their arms around our young people and redirect them when needed. Next slide, please. The technical assistance from the Casey Foundation, I just wanted to give you a little bit of what that means. I'm the Technical Assistance Leader for Charlottesville. And basically, I support, bring the site support through a couple of different ways. I support them in giving them guidance on best practice and research alignment whenever they are proposing new ways to do things or practice changes, policy changes, whatever it may be. I help facilitate connections and network to other sites that are doing promising and best practice work throughout the country. And then also just helping to brainstorm new ideas and strategize implementation plans and helping them achieve whatever it is that Charlottesville is endeavoring to achieve throughout disengagement, but specifically for their Georgetown goals that they set. Next slide. I wanted to give you an overview of our national network. You can go to the next slide. Probation transformation is a nationwide initiative. If you're not familiar with the Casey Foundation, or maybe you are, you probably know about JDAI, the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, started back in 1997.
I just want to check on, excuse me, just connection issues. Are you moving around or is it just, or it may be us? Mr. Willard, do you know?
It sounds like her audio connection is not high quality at the moment.
Okay. So you're going in and out at times.
Thank you for telling me. I'm so sorry about that. Is that better? Just about done. I have two slides. I'm going to submit for that. So, can you, okay?
It's not as it has been, so you can try.
Okay. So I'll just go over this quickly. So the Casey Foundation started the JDAI Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative back in 1997, which focuses on the front end of the system and really emphasizes that who should be in detention or who should go to detention for young people. It is the, it's an initiative that focuses on keeping out young people out of detention as much as possible. We then have the deep end, that expanded to the deep end initiative that focuses on reducing out-of-home placement, especially for youth of color. We have 12 sites across the country for the deep end initiative. From there, knowing that probation was a feeder, through research, we learned that probation can be a feeder to out-of-home placement for young people. We started to focus on probation transformation. This is why we have this initiative now. We have all of these sites throughout the country. These are our probation transformation sites here. It is a network throughout the country. And Charlottesville attended our first cohort of the Georgetown Certificate Program for Probation Transformation back in 2019. That was an application process that Charlottesville went through. We had jurisdictions from all over the country apply to come to that certificate program. It was a week-long of training by experts across the country around probation and system reform for young people. And Charlottesville was chosen for that. So they are now part of our national network. Next slide, please. And just wanted to give you an overview as well of our partner organizations, national partner organizations across the country. We work with many that are all sort of in concert, saying that it's time for us to really look at juvenile probation and the practices that we are applying to our young people. American Probation and Parole Association is a huge one that I work with. The Council for Juvenile Justice, CJJ, that works with the SAGs across the country. The Council of State Government, I've already mentioned Georgetown University. The National Council of State Legislatures is another one. If you're not familiar with them, we have worked with them around policy reform for probation for young people. NCJ, FCJ is a huge partner of ours that has put out a resolution back in 2017 that you might want to look at around adolescent brain development and juvenile court. And then the Urban Institute is a research organization that we also partner with to do our work. Thank you for having me. That's my section of this presentation, and I think I am passionate to miss Martha Carroll.
Thank you, Opal. Thank you for giving us your time today to make this presentation. Following our training back in November of 2019, when we spent a week at Georgetown, the Charlottesville team came home to the community with intentions of engaging our community partners and the families that we serve in a more meaningful way. Our team includes, as you've already heard, members from the Court Service Unit, our State Office of the Department of Juvenile Justice, our Presiding Judge, David Beredo, and partners from Human Services, our Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the Police Department. We spent several months developing a guide for probation transformation in this community. The next task was to engage our community partners. Because of the pandemic, we held five virtual convening sessions in lieu of in-person presentations. Many of these sessions had over 90 participants each. These participants included community stakeholders such as staff from Region 10 and the Department of Social Services, and community partners such as Conscious Capitalists and Redemption Mentoring. Judge Beredo, Commonwealth Attorneys, public defenders, and private members of the bar were also included in these convenings. In small groups, we had the opportunity to examine current policies and practices and often look for improvements and solutions that might help us moving forward. Now the real work begins as we develop work groups on topics such as family engagement and pre-arrest diversion. These work groups will continue to be a partnership between the Court Service Unit, our system stakeholders, and our community partners, and of course, the court. And you can move to the next slide. Thank you.
Krista Galio, I'm one of the probation supervisors here in the Charlottesville office. And again, want to echo the thank yous for allowing us to present. With all of our goals, we are approaching all of them with a race equity lens. We're also concentrating heavily on trauma and family engagement. And as we begin to track our data, we're not just focusing on recidivism, but we're looking at improving our opportunities, the resources, and services for our youth and families and the overall community. As Ms. Carroll said, we're currently forming work groups. We're starting with four. One focused on family engagement, one on pre-arrest diversion, one on technical violations and a purpose statement, and then one focusing on our petitions for children in need of services or supervision. Each group will include a member of the Georgetown team as well as staff from our community partner agencies and our stakeholders, members of the community, and particularly youth and families with lived experience. We'll be organizing focus groups and surveys to learn what our youth and families really need and what they want. We want to empower them and include them at all points of the decision-making. We want to change our culture. We have to change our culture of how, what, and why of what we do. And through consultation with the Annie Casey Foundation, we have developed an action plan already for improving family engagement that includes some specialized training through Justice for Families, which will include all probation staff and a wide range of our community partners and stakeholders. We'll have that initial training for new staff, and we'll have ongoing training for all of our staff, at least on a yearly basis. We're also implementing a family engagement specialist, someone who can mentor our other probation officers and staff, someone who can train them in the best practices, who keeps on top of best practices, someone who can facilitate family forums so we can give the families and our youth a voice in a non-confrontational manner, and someone to assist with treatment planning and just everything that goes along with engaging our families. Our unit, Court Service Unit, has begun conversations on race. I know that Community Attention previously completed this, but this is a dialogue to change process that's organized and facilitated by a diverse group of people to create a vision of change in one's community. So through building new relationships, raising awareness, and considering a wide range of views, we develop and create action ideas. And then we carry out those action ideas and assess the change that is happening. So we're really excited about all of the work groups starting and all of the training and conversations we're having with just the community, everyone in general. I'll now turn it over to one of our other probation intake supervisors, Mark Moore. Thank you. And you can advance the slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So what we're hoping for with this entire project and working through the capstone with Georgetown Annie Casey is just ultimately, we want a better system, a better community, safer community for all citizens of Charlottesville. And with that comes a better outcome for the kids who are truly needing the intervention. As Opal stated before, not all kids who commit Delinquency Act or commit Status Offense Acts need to be on a level of supervision with the courts. And that's a shift that we're looking to do through this process. And we're looking to isolate probation to the kids who truly need probation and make improvements where they're indicated. And that's coming from surveys, from research, from different spectrums throughout the system, and community partners are working with us with that, with some policy shifts. We also, big one is, we are looking to, and we will reduce violations that result in confinement and placement. We're moving away from, we've already, with the DAI, we've already moved away from a lot of our confinements, but we're looking to actually increase that. And pretty much, we don't want the violations of kids to result in them being confined and placed outside of our community. We want to keep the kids in our community. We also want to give young people opportunities to grow and thrive. That's looking at more incentive bases, we indicated before, but just more ways to not just be a checkbox, but we could be coaches for the kids and really work and help them throughout the process and connect them back to the community who's going to ultimately help them. And then we also want to prepare them for a healthy adulthood by supporting them through maturation. So that's just looking to give them the skills that they need, not necessarily just making sure they're in compliance with the court order, but bringing the community on board. And you can advance to the next, jump two slides, and then one more, and then, Hunter, go ahead.
Thanks, Mark. So to continue this work, we want to communicate with council, with everyone here, about how council can support our work through funding and make it very clear, nobody here is asking for any funding for anybody that's on this call doing this. What we're looking for is support from council for community partners, non-traditional programs, interventions, new developing organizations that are coming in, looking to work either with us or in conjunction with us, or just within our goal sets, to meet these, the goals you've set, and that are committed to probation transformation for local youth and families, particularly our local youth and family. That's really our regional approach at this point. Also, funding needed for training, initially ongoing to shift to new and better practices, for instance, family engagement, which we've been talking about, equity training, data improvement, monitoring, and more adolescent development, maybe some more trauma training as it develops in the community. Also through communication, helping to connect new and emerging partners with our group to deepen and broaden our collaborative efforts. We mentioned earlier, we had about an average of 90 people per convening, and it really was nice to not just have the regular people there. We had all kinds of people from the community present, business owners, people that have been involved in the juvenile justice system. We invited several parents. We had a nice, a nice balanced group, and we got some really good information about what we can do locally to improve and what voices aren't being heard. And we could use council's help in spreading the word and helping us connect with new people that want to do that. And the Court Service Unit, and the courts can't do it alone. It's a community approach. And at this point, as Krista mentioned, the work groups will be launching. It'll be, you know, a community effort. That is our presentation. We're open for questions, or if anything wants to be clarified, we will do our best. I'm sure somebody here answered questions, but I'm not really trying to wrap these things up. But our presentation is technically over, and we can open up for questions.
Thank you. Presentation. Counselors, are there any questions?
I'm just curious. So we've talked a lot about family engagement and recognizing the importance of that. What does that look like in these models that you're talking about? Can you just kind of elaborate on that a little further?
Opal, if you're there, can you talk about Justice for Families a little bit? And we're maybe one direction we're heading.
Yeah, I'm not going to talk about particularly Justice for Families. They are, they're a partner organization that provides training across the country. And if you'd like to find out more about them, you can definitely just Google them, and it'll come, it'll come out. But when we talk about family engagement, it's really sort of getting away from the sort of traditional way that systems are, have always sort of operated, with not really asking families and young people what do they need or what's best for them. It's really giving them the opportunity to have voice in the process, to indicate what works for them, what doesn't work for them, what do they think they need, what is working throughout the process, and what's not working. And then the system or the probation officers, the organization, or whomever is working with the young person and family, really taking the time to listen to that and then coming together as partners in the process to determine what needs to happen, what shifts need to occur, what needs to be different, and what could be done differently so that the young person is able to achieve their goals that have been set out for probation. And the other thing is, family engagement is really about, all of this is not about just completing the probation term. It's really about using the probation term as an opportunity to set the young person up for long-term success. So really making connections within the community, family, any other caring adults that they have in their lives that will outlast the probation term. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Comments?
I'm curious, approximately, like what ratio do you think in the information that has come through in Charlottesville in particular, should it be reduced that youth are going to probation now? Sorry, that's a little bit convoluted. But potentially the reduction in caseload or the reduction in numbers of children who are being sent to probation through this model?
So I'll start, and then others might want to join in. I think we certainly would expect to see some reduction. We've been seeing that statewide for a period of time and throughout, and this kind of work is not happening in other parts of the state. So I think we'll notice it in a more heightened way here. I think part of what we hope is that kids won't get to us at all, that that work on the front end between Human Services and the police or what other community organizations we can engage, they'll be able to offer the right services, and kids will be successful, and their families will be engaged in that, and they won't need to come to us. So that's, that's one hope, is that that front-end pre-booking work will happen. I think we expect to see certainly a reduction in traditional diversion, where kids actually do get to our door, and we'll be tracking those numbers carefully. We already look at that on a regular basis, and Charlottesville does well compared to their colleagues around the state. But I think we'll expect those numbers to increase also. And so that, in that way, then probation staff will be able to work with small caseloads for kids who really need that extra level of support. You heard, I think, Opal talk about eight to 12, and so we should certainly be well within that range as all of these activities kind of merge together. Mark, I don't know if you have anything you might want to add.
And could you, whoever answers next, would you just add what's the current caseload per?
Yeah, of course. So current, well, so since we oversee, we're talking strictly about Charlottesville. We also include, within our office, we have the nine other counties. So it's including Albemarle County for our office here. So we're actually within the range that we like right now, less than 12 per probation officer. However, a lot of that did contribute to, of course, coronavirus did contribute to the reduction, you know, kids running out, which is a good thing, kids running out, you know, committing crimes and doing certain things that came to the police officer's attention. We just want to ensure that the practices that we implement are going to ensure and promote that we keep the smaller caseloads so that they can deal with the kids that are strictly on probation. Now, this does not include kids on parole or kids on diversion, things such as that. So we're, that's strictly just a probation. So I can't give you an exact number on it, but I do know it's less than 12 currently of the youth that are on probation in the Charlottesville/Albemarle caseload for our probation officers. But then, on, to piggyback on the main question about the violations, it's also more so just looking to looking to ensure that kids, if you take a step back with the parole and committed youth, a lot of those kids were committed and, you know, put on parole based off of violations that they had while on probation. And that was, we saw a big issue with that racially, it was not racially equitable. You know, a lot of, I think we had it one year, 100% of the people who were committed were black males, and they were all off of violations. So we're not talking about 15, 20 major numbers here, but we're still looking at the numbers here within Charlottesville, saying that that's an alarming rate. So we're looking to reduce that, and with that, of course, that comes to family engagement and everything else, but it has to come from courageous policy changes. You know, the Department of Juvenile Justice is already through a transformation, which is great, but you know, when you're looking at a statewide change, it's much harder to make policies where we're looking at more of a microorganism for Charlottesville, we can do some pretty bold changes within our policy. So that's what we're looking at, and where we're saying, we want to see a reduction in violations. The saying is, we wanted to go down to zero if we had a baseline. We don't want any kids to be locked up based off of violations. We do understand that we have to detain kids based off of charges that they will commit, but we're talking, but when they're on violations and on probation or parole, we want to see that down to pretty much zero with no confinement for them.
Will the new change in law affect that? I understand that the new change in law about not being able...
No, that won't.
Violation based on technicality, yeah.
Right, that law is for 10-year-olds in regards to us not being able to detain youth, but then the other law that was changed was strictly just for, I think, violations of court orders off of status offenses. That does not affect cases that are delinquent. So within the juvenile system, you have the delinquency route, and then you have the status route, where you have status such as curfews, things such as that. But for the delinquency route, nothing has changed with the detainment or that, but status route, yes, it has, for the violations of court order.
I have a quick follow-up question to that previous question. So do the council, your team only work with Charlottesville, could you potentially have 12 Charlottesville citizens on your caseload, and then 12 from another county?
I can let Krista answer that, but I don't. Historically, we don't break it up. I believe we sit by Charlottesville and Albemarle. They're typically mixed based off of what's in the best interest of the youth with the probation officer. But to your question, yes, it's a potential that there could be 12 strictly from Charlottesville, but if it's that, we wouldn't add any more kids based off of this frame of reference. We wouldn't add any Albemarle kids if a PO had 12 Charlottesville kids already.
Okay, so the max would be 12, not the potential?
Correct.
I was also curious, I'm more familiar with the adult systems, and I'm also very familiar with the mental health population and where the crossover is there. I know we're looking at five state hospitals having no new admitances recently, and what you have been seeing in this CAPSTAN project with the mental illness rate, or what later, if there was any numbers that have looked, or any research that's been done about later mental illness, that's locally at least?
No, we have not looked at any mental illness rates and everything, and later onset diagnoses. We do work very hand-in-hand with Regenton and other providers who we do outsource our mental health youth to, to receive the services, because we're not a mental health, excuse me, knocked it out, because we're not a mental health-trained agency to, we work well with them, but we don't do diagnoses and everything. So we have not, but I definitely, I wrote the question out, so we'll look back to see if there are any, and if there's any information strictly for Charlottesville, we definitely can find that out for you.
I'm also concerned, what if we're seeing in our own juvenile justice population, children who have got mental health diagnoses, who are going into jail or detentions because there is no inpatient or even crisis management treatment for children, really?
Right, right. I do know that we don't have a less restrictive detention center right now. In this area, we strictly have just detention or release, when you're talking about pre, like the pre-trial detention. So we don't unfortunately have that, but we do, through the DAI and with everything else, do gauge where that child is, and it's not a mental health assessment, but if a kid is struggling with it, we do, we are required by policy and regulations to see that kid every 10 days, and then the request for that child to be either hospitalized or moved elsewhere. But a lot of our kids do have mental health concerns that are going into the facilities, and if we find that, especially on the back end, like committed youth, if we find that they, their mental health, in better words, outweigh the criminal delinquency aspect of it, then we do have places where we can detain youth, and, you know, have them serve their time in a residential facility through our DJA continuum, and that will target the mental health because of delinquency was just a byproduct, right? Like the kid, that's how they came into our system, but that's not the focus that we need. We focus on the mental health through that, so.
We're really fortunate to have, we have traditional outpatient services, we have a number of treatment modalities that go into the home and work extensively with families, some that are just local to Charlottesville, and then some others that come in to the community through juvenile justice funding. So many of the kids we're involved with are getting some kind of specialized services. Again, we're not the one doing the evaluations or the treatment, but we're case managing and coordinating those services.
And how much effort is the equity lens piece that was mentioned before? Because that's a key piece to view through equity lens. And so how much progress are you all making in terms of service for that or for the youth, either, you know, being within their racial group?
So I think that's something that we'll be learning a lot more about, and we'll be looking at as we make referrals for children and looking to their families to give us input in terms of what they think the needs are of those children. And we have a pretty diverse population here, and we want children to have access to providers that they will feel comfortable with.
If I may, this is Opal. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you.
But if I can piggyback on that just a little bit, race equity is an extremely high priority, not only for the Casey Foundation, but has been voiced many times from this team that I'm working with in Charlottesville. And I think one of the things that's key to this is we're trying to look at everything, data, our strategies, everything through a race equity lens. And one of the things that came up from the very beginning was, we need young people to tell us, and families to tell us, what it is that they need, right? Like, who are they connected to within the community, who they want to be connected to, so that we can provide those culturally responsive, sensitive programs that they are seeking, that they need, and we can then go out and see what they are most needing themselves. So it's really key for us to speak from the young people, and their families, and the community, who we should approaching as far as community partnerships from the get-go, so that we're doing this, so that we're needing race equity as much as possible.
I have one more question, just in terms of the pre-arrest diversion. What is that process? Is that something that's already in place, or is that something that will be developed more with the working groups? And I'm assuming the Ohio, that was maybe part of this process, just how are they, and it's just a star there, I don't know if that's where it started or not, but how are they doing in terms of both the numbers, the diversion, and what is their pre-arrest process? Pre-arrest diversion process?
I can answer the first part, Mayor Walker. The first part of your question about the pre-arrest diversion plan, that is in the works. And so we do have a description of a program, we do have a, I guess you would call it a working MOU, that we're trying to work out with CPD on how to actually execute this, because it's new, it's a brand-new way of working. I can't really give you a specific, like, update on like where it is or who has it, but we do have a template for it. We do have an MOU that we've created through a partner. I think the partner's out in Los Angeles that does similar work. They helped us kind of create this MOU. They work with their police department. I just can't really give you a very clear answer of when this will start, or what the actual issue is, that we don't have it yet. And we do have, I will tell you, we have a small amount of funding to start a pilot project to do it. So the pieces are there, and I guess probably it's my job to figure out, like, why, to go back to CPD and ask them, and figure out where the holdup is, but we do have those things, and we do have all the parts, pieces. The second part of your question, I'm gonna have to hand over to Opal, because I don't know what is going on in Ohio, so she'll answer that question.
Yeah, so Mayor Walker, I'm not sure exactly what you'd like to know about Ohio. We do have, when we started probation transformation, we had two pilot sites. Lucas County, Ohio was part of that two county, two sites that we piloted at the very beginning of this. Ohio Simpson has used what they call reclaim funds, it's state funds that are dedicated to juvenile justice, and they have redirected that towards their probation transformation efforts. And what they did was, it was sort of state to local, if you, if the local jurisdictions wanted to apply for state funding, they had to meet certain criteria that was in line with probation transformation. And so they sort of did this state-level sort of down in the interest, and motivated them with funding, and got different sites on board that way. They also did statewide training for those sites altogether in probation transformation, and also, and that's really it. Lucas County, we have the most information on because they've been with us for so long, and they're a deep-end site. And so one of the things, two things that they are known for nationwide, one would be their misdemeanor services, community building. That's where Lucas County has already determined that they will not put any young people on probation for misdemeanor offenses. And first-time felonies are eligible for probation, and most likely will be placed on probation. So that's the first thing that they do. The second thing that they're known for is their Family Navigators Program, which is a family support led by families that have justice-involved young people, and they are guiding and support for other families that are experiencing the court system and the justice system for the young person. So that's the main two things that Lucas is widely known for, but there's a lot going on in Ohio. There's seven sites altogether.
Thank you. Counselors, are there any other questions? Well, thank you all. If there isn't any wrap-up, we appreciate the presentation and the information that you shared with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks a lot.
Lisa, I just want to check and make sure it's okay for us to read into closed session earlier than 5:30?
Yes, I believe that it is. I have spoken with the attorney who's going to participate in a portion of the closed meeting, and he was planning on being available anytime after 5 o'clock.
Also, will it be opening up for a public comment?
Yes, thank you for the reminder, Ms. Thomas.
But yes, I think you can go into closed meeting early if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Mr. Willer, I'll turn it over to you for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. We have nine people in the audience right now. If you'd like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. And if you're on via telephone, you can press star nine. Each person will have up to three minutes. And we have one hand raised. First up is Katrina Turner. Katrina, you're on with counsel, and you've got three minutes.
How's everybody doing?
Go ahead, you may need to speak up a little.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm glad to know that, you know, things are looking up to the children and their welfare, because at eight years old, my grandson wanted to kill himself. He was having many problems. He wanted to kill my son. He attempted to stab him. He pulled a BB gun on him. He did many things. And my son and I got in contact with the people who needed to be involved with him. While the mother did not, you know, plenty of proof that the mother, you know, was the one that the children were in danger of, but instead of the courts and everybody listening to that, you know, my son one day called the police, and he ended up getting arrested, okay? This is one of the things that's wrong with the children today. They take the fathers out of the household, and then they don't allow the father to spend that time with the children that needs to be spent with the children. Okay, the fathers get maybe six, seven hours a week with their children, with their sons. How is that going to help these young, I'm talking about a black child? How is this helping our black children by taking the father out of the equation, and then the children are allowed to do whatever they want to do because the mothers are not strong enough, some of the mothers, not all, are not strong enough to raise that son? Okay, this is what we need to fix in the system. We need to give more time back to that man, so he can keep his son what a man is supposed to be. Because a lot of these women out here are letting these children run wild. And the only way that some of this can stop is to give these men the time they need. My son can't even help his children with their homework. He can't take them on vacation because of what happened to him a few years ago, when he was the one who called for help, but the system chose not to help him. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to address counsel, please click the raise hand icon in the Zoom webinar. Mayor Walker, I don't see any additional hands.
Counselor Hill, you have the closed session motion?
Yep, ready for that? Pursuant to Section 2.23712 of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the City Council closes open meeting and convenes in a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A1, for discussion and consideration of the performance of the clerk of city council and Virginia and Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A7, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff pertaining to litigation pending in the Charlottesville Circuit Court, case number CL21-116, because consultation of, or briefing in the open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city.
Was that a second?
Yes.
Second. All right. Ms. Thomas?
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne? I'm sorry, Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a separate link to return to for the thirty meeting.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks.